Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
The meeting of the Westminster Select Board. The order. Any adjustments to the agenda?
I have under boards and commissions, two possible appointments to our boards and commissions.
Anything else? Accepting the minutes of the meeting of May 27.
I move that we approve the minutes as per.
The move. Make second.
Second.
Move the sentence, accept the minutes of May 27. Any discussion? Do you want to discuss it, Toby? You want to read them? Are you good?
I need.
Do you want to vote on? Did you want to discuss them?
No.
Okay. All in favor, accepting the minutes. Say aye. Aye. Pose. Communicating with public on it. No? Okay. Long time finish business. Construction of Henwood Hill, discussion.
In your packet, you have some of the pricing that you requested. These are not bids, these are estimates. So we have like discrepancy on the guardrails. So I gave you prices on both. Traffic lights. I did just a two-month rental. If it was more, it's the same. So it didn't matter. So I gave you just two-month rental. It would probably be more than a four-month rental. I did get a letter from Jeff Nugent, who is our Wyndham Regional person. And our grants and aid monies, as long as it's working towards improvements for Act 64, we're good to go. So that's intact. Mirrors, the 36 and the 48-inch are with one post. Chuck and I were just talking just before this meeting. And possibly, we're going to need two posts. So you'd have to add $100 to both of those prices. Because I don't think one post would be secure enough. Engineer pricing, I asked for three mid-size companies and got two prices. And you can see the ranges of that. It would be so that would be under $30,000 for Henwood Hill.
Okay. So it seems pretty clear, I guess, that... Or I think it's clear that this year we'll only have 37.5. It'll go into tax rate and then we'll have to spend.
We could cut whatever our crew wants to do.
Oh, and then any time coming?
Or whatever. We're in there, we really didn't separate money. We assumed we were going to spend some money with our own crew doing it. So but out of pocket, it would be 37 that we budgeted. And then if the crew could do some of the worst. But speaking of that, I talked to a couple of the contractors. And they questioned, the people that own the land brought up the fact that they're willing to cut a tree. I would like to... The question was, why don't we just cut all the trees on the corner completely? And have contractors just dig it back, put a little bit of retaining wall in. The people gave you permission to take all the trees. And then you wouldn't be screwed with the road. You just accidentally leave the road, put the guide rails, and just cut that whole corner back. There's a lot of nice clean sand to fill. And we could fill it worth some money. This is what we're thinking. If we hit ledge, we're only a benefit. That's as far as we would go. And we wouldn't need a retainer wall.
The concerns that all of the people, the engineers that we've talked to, is that if you take the trees, you're loosening that soil.
Take the whole bank? Yeah, take the whole bank. That's what I'm saying. You would actually take the trees, cut the bank, and you would have to go get their permission because we'd be going into their land. There's a lot, if this what we think is a lot of fill, you would take that whole corner, cut all the trees, and just cut it back. You're not really then doing much with the road other than putting the drains because you leave the road. You're not going to the right-hand side of it. And that was all nice clean sand to fill. If the sand is, we're paying to go get it. If we can get some, quite a bit of guides out of it, it would be up to the owners allowing us to go back that way. You see what I'm saying? We'd have to discuss it with them. But they didn't bring up immediately.
So you're just going to do the corner? And then a retention?
I'm only one person wanting to bring that up.
You're just trying to get your perspective.
My view on this, that road's been like that for years. The corner's bad. Got to fix the corner. But if we could go in there and make a big garden so now the corner is actually two lanes wide, it gives you an area that you do, you can even actually go around somebody and it's not dangerous anymore. And then you're not questioning the rest of the road. But when we're looking at it, we're going to like, hey, how do we keep those trees from sliding down the bank? The only other way is give up and have somebody come in and cut all the trees. We would, like I said, we would be probably approaching more of their land. And we would have to get their permission. But they did say to us at the town meeting that they were willing to allow us to go in there. And that was an option that a couple contractors came up to me. Being the fact that the worst case issue hit ledge. And at that point, you stop and now you've got a retainer wall. And then the other way was all of a sudden, if you get to a point, you might compromise and put some kind of a retainer wall to hold it back. And you've already cut way back in and took a lot of the fill out. Don't put the fill down over the bank. Just actually take it away. And you don't touch the road. You just actually cut that corner down.
Two questions. Last, will you ask the engineers for an estimate, a quote? What was the scope of work you asked?
The maximum. The maximum. So that we would know the high end of the project.
And they'll also tell whether that outside bank is stable?
Yes. By moving the center of the road, you're automatically leaving that side bank so that it would be stable. Yes. And with the stone barrier that we were talking about on the bigger project, yes, it would definitely be secure. Because you're actually going to link it into the main road the way it is right now.
Would it?
Right. First, I think, where is this corner? Who's the one close to Gateville?
Yeah.
That really tight corner, there's no one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just don't know if we could approach, you know, and ask if that's even a possibility. You see what I'm saying? If they say no, then don't even go any further. But if they say yeah, I would like to ask them, investigate what would that cost? And is that feasible?
And then, I thought we talked before...
We talked about not really cutting the trees, only a couple, and trying to dig and put a retainer wall.
And how far back are you thinking?
That's a good question. I would think we need to have somebody. A way back, and the fill is what we think is good fill. The cotton, I mean, here we are buying it. We actually...
We don't buy it.
No. But if it's sand, good fill, we could sell it or use it.
I don't know. I mean, I guess it seems to me the best thing to do is we have 37,000 plus is to hire the engineer. Ask the engineer...
I'm just laying out a couple of different options. We need to ask the engineer. That's all. It could be the engineer comes back with a land order and says, no, it's not a possibility. I just wanted to make sure we... I mean, we all agree, we need to have guide rails. And we don't have to touch that side of the road and only cut back.
Right.
And, you know, there's a couple of different options to do it.
Right. That would be, that makes sense. But then we also, while we're reading, because we don't need to do anything else here except what our road crew could do, we need to have some way to make that corner safe. So whether it's...
We would definitely, I would assume we would have to investigate the guide rails and the mirrors, at least. You know? And then maybe we would still meet one more time to see if Chuck could do something, any, on a low scale, to just make it a little more passable for one more year.
Hello? What do you think about that?
Could people talk a little louder?
Okay.
Thank you.
Maybe like this?
Yeah. Well, if we figure out what the scope of work is then I can let you know what, you know, what you're thinking.
Right.
And we can figure it out. Schedule a meeting. We're still going to rebuild Henwood Hill Road, or Dale Road, we're going to address that issue.
Right.
Which I already wrote maintenance on top of that. So we just got to...
Right. What I was thinking is the money that we, the money that we have this year, the 37.5, should, I'm assuming, go to the engineering, plus the guardrails, plus the mirrors as a safety. Does that, does that make sense?
That would use all the 37.
That would use all the engineering. Unless the grant made, that would be there.
Yep.
Is that... Yeah. So do you, so is there any more discussion about that? Does that seem reasonable? Yes.
I guess I'm looking at, making sure that you have any questions to reflect on.
So, I'm, sorry, I'm taking notes too. So we're going to proceed with the guardrail. Is that what I heard?
Well, we didn't pass on a motion of it.
But that was what we were talking about. The guardrails and mirrors.
And we have plenty of monies for both of those.
And the engineer?
Susan? Susan, this is Alice. Could I interrupt, please? Apparently, Nate's asking a question. And no one is aware of that because there is no computer.
Say it again. Who is this, please?
Alice.
Alice. Oh, Alice. Oh, hi. Okay. What, that question again, Alice, please? Can you hear me, Alice?
Well, I can hear you. I act down. I'm going to hear it again.
Okay.
Apparently, Nate's daughter is trying to ask a question. But no one has a computer open that they can see that he is on a Zoom chat.
Can you see that, Colin?
There's no raised hands.
There are no raised hands? Okay.
We don't have hands available. I have to go in and unmute my mic in order to reach you.
Colin's, uh...
And I suggested that he try to do that. Apparently, it's not having success.
Colin's dinging around with the...
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going.
Okay.
Is Nate on?
Nate's on.
Is he on there? You can see him? Oh, yeah.
Can you hear me?
Is that you, Nate? Okay. We can hear you now.
My, my question was, was how do we participate in this meeting if nobody has means to identify when we want to speak?
Uh, well, I think...
What we do?
So there's a way you can raise your hand, right? Or no? I'm assuming that's what we did at the last meeting.
There should be, but I don't see a setting for it. Should be a way. I mean, also, they can unmute themselves.
Pardon?
They can unmute themselves at any time. I'm not stopping them from doing that either.
Unmuting themselves.
All right. As long as somebody can hear, I'll just unmute and we'll screen.
Right. So was that your question? And now we can hear you?
Ask Nate, does he have a question?
I thought that was... Do you have another question, Nate?
That was my question, was how do we participate in this meeting if we can't participate? Because nobody has a computer. And attention to the computer.
Yes, there is. Colin, there is. There's a gentleman right there looking at it.
He's trying to figure out...
Okay. I'll just unmute and screen when I want to say something.
Okay.
That's how we have to do it.
What's that?
That's how he said you have to do it.
Oh, okay.
I don't think he realizes that there's somebody watching the computer.
Right. But Colin's watching, so if someone... The point was that you didn't, there was no hand raising, you know, that we moved hand for some reason.
But I think what happened is you're looking here, you're looking around, and none of us have computers. He's questioning, how you guys know I'm raising my hand? Because I don't think he sees him.
Next question. Let's go back to the engineering.
Do we have a scope of work yet? Do you want to put, get it started on the guardrails and the mirrors? And then we can, we can deal with the retaining wall, how far to go, engineering of it.
My only concern would be that with the guide rails and mirror being in the way, if we decide to do some work this summer. You see what I'm saying? Good? I don't know.
Yep. The only thing we had discussed, I had discussed a little with, and I don't have a chance to talk to Russ. But before we put the guardrails in, we should remove the burr. Because the guardrails will be over the burr. And once you do that, then you can't...
Clean.
You can't clean it off like you should. So the thing to do is, you know, they would schedule it. I would know the day before. I would go the day before, clean it off just ahead of them, and then install the guardrail.
Why don't, Russ, you and Chuck get together, come back with a scope of time for the summer? Of what would you do?
I've got to have a scope of work before I give you a scope of time. I got to know what we're doing before I know...
Take the burr off. If you come back, tell us what you need to do to get ready for that.
That's a couple hours.
Okay. So we got everything going on, right?
And that's probably...
Sorry. The guardrails, the mirrors, and the engineering work. Okay. And we need a motion for that?
I don't think so.
So what's the difference between the 475 and the 600? Or how far you look with the guardrail? Is that what the difference is?
That's correct. It's the distance.
Okay. So is one only going through the corner? And the other one's going around the corner and down the other side? Is that what it is?
One is starting up the hill further, towards CCC Road. And both are going around the corner where it's not safe.
Aye.
All right. So presumably, that would provide some safety for this summer while we get the engineering done. Any other discussion? Go ahead, Sophia.
So I have to drive down here because nobody was paying attention to the people that are logged on to the computer. I've heard that now Alice got your attention. You guys are really close to me filing a complaint with the Secretary of State's office about the lack of participation ability during town meeting and during the select board meetings. I'm really upset that I was just at home and you can't even participate until somebody's screaming into the computer. So...
It's all new, right?
I understand that, Susan. But it's been going on since March. It's time to come up to speed with what the rest of the towns in this area are doing. So that's all I'll say about that. But I would like a copy of that letter, or whatever it is from Wyndham Regional that Russ said he got confirmation that that grant was still available.
You have that, sir?
And not tonight, but I can.
So this is your package, please.
Nate's...
I know that. I was yelling. I was yelling Susan's name, how do we participate? Back TV is not responsible for manning Zoom for us. So, I mean, and then I got muted. And then Nate texted me on the way and said that Alice got through. She yelled and somebody heard her. But you can't hear on the air. It's just now. I know you don't like this whole process. I don't either. But there are people that do not feel comfortable participating in group sessions right now. And they have that right to feel that way right now. So we have to accommodate them or you're limiting participation in this process.
Yep. That's why we brought Susan to this meeting.
We're trying to do balls. I mean, we're not...
I know, but Craig, it's not working, is what I'm saying.
I know. There's a gentleman here. We talked to him with monitor. We would stop.
I'm not, I'm not complaining about Back TV at all. I'm not. I really don't. It's not. Other towns are doing it without this issue. I've watched their meetings all the time. So I don't know what's different about us. So I'm done with that. I'll shut up about that. And I do want a copy of that other...
You're there? Russ, you got that?
I'd like a copy of that, too. And I'll just say that not, not the last, at the last town meeting, but the meeting before that, I tried to participate and wasn't able on my computer.
Oh, we can get it all in the meeting? Right. You could visit it, but, you know, it's difficult. There's no doubt about it. It's a play. Okay. Any other discussion about Henwood Hill? Kind of know what we're doing at the moment?
Good.
Discussion about the special town meeting. Anybody have any?
Let me get a pad.
Yeah. Let me get a pad.
Nice. See that many people show up?
I know. That was great. I thought it was the... Okay. Mark, what happens to community healths?
That would be me.
Yeah.
I was going to ask Russ. I guess we need to figure out how to, how to get something out in the next Gazette saying we want to form a committee. At the meeting, I had two people come up to me that want to be on that committee, which was nice. And one was from Westminster West, and one was from Gateville. Be nice to get, we need another couple people from different parts of the town of Westminster. If we could put something in the Gazette, and I'll get together with Russ and the timeframe that we could ask for people that would want to volunteer to be on that committee, doing the study of what we're going to do with the Northwest Minister Community Health. Which, when is that happening down for the Gazette?
Next week, Wednesday.
Okay. I'll get together with Russ. Thanks, Russ.
Thanks for bringing that up there at the meeting. And the other one? Saturday, Friday, Saturday?
I wanted to discuss this quickly with the board. Because I think you and I, we talked about meeting with Larry Slayson. And I did talk to Mr. Anthony Savage that owns it. We should go to the attorney's office. I think what my concern is, that when we draw up this agreement, there's a couple things that, being the fact that if we do the bore samplings, we own those bore samplings. So the couple scenario would be that, once we do them, unless to say they turn out to be really good or interesting, we still own them. We can negotiate a contract with him. If we get done, we can't negotiate the contract. We would still own those bore samples. And then he would have a right to buy them from us if he wanted to take them and negotiate with another buyer only after we decided we couldn't come to an agreement. I just, we never discussed that. I just wanted to discuss that quickly before we went to the attorney. He was agreement on that also. I'm very agree.
So would we go 4,500, after this stage?
Basically, we would, we would spend the 4,500. And if it came back really good, we'd keep pursuing. But we, we would own those samples, not somebody else. He could, you know, and we, but if we get done and we can't come to an agreement, he might want to negotiate to buy, buy those from us in case he was going to sell it to somebody else. And I think that's the terminology, or somehow in a timeframe of how long it's going to take, how long he would have to put it on hold, and a few other things like that.
So what are we doing here? What's our next step?
I think if we could schedule a meeting with Larry Slayson and discuss what we want, I would say you and I could do that.
Okay.
And then have him drop a letter. And then we can come back to the board and go over it. Go over the letter with, or the agreement, whatever you want to call it. I just wanted to find the...
Yeah? Hello?
In their way, since you're closer to the mic, you can summarize what he just said? And explain to me what we're doing with the lawyer with this property?
We're going to meet with the lawyer to discuss, and Craig?
Nate?
Go ahead. Yeah.
Nate, can you hear me now? Can't still hear me now.
Yeah. I can hear you.
Okay. Basically, we meet with the attorneys to write up a contract that we're, once we do the bore samples, we own the bore samples, so that we would only have the rights to it. And if we can't make an agreement, that we still would own it. In other words, that Mr. Savage couldn't take the bore samples and try to sell it to another, another potential buyer. And it'd be a timeframe on how fast we would come up with an agreement. Even if the bore samples weren't good, we would still retain them unless he wants to buy them from us.
Okay. I understand that. Thank you.
Yep.
So please set up, do you want to set up that meeting? Or do you want me to set up the meeting?
I think I'll just start quick with Russ. But then, I think, Russ has got so much to do. I think if you and I just talk to him, we could do it. Thank you.
Cut up on the minutes, Russ?
Yep.
New business, year-end budget discussion.
In your packet, you have the financials to date. We only have one more meeting after this one to get all the facts together. Right now, we are internally moving monies such as the equipment fund, the bridge fund, the mandate loan monies, et cetera. We have, still have to get those all situated. And for the next meeting, we'll have a good shot at explaining how much revenue or deficit we will carry over. Looks to be like surplus.
Russ, every year we discuss this, going through property tax. And I didn't bring the, I didn't bring the last years, because we always get criticized for only putting 20,000, but it is a gap. And this 165,000 that we collected on going through the property tax, is that up from the last few years, or is that in line with?
Yeah, it's a lot off this year.
It's a lot more than what we normally get.
Yes, we carried over a lot from last year, working with people with contracts, and that's why you're seeing that number up.
No, it's good, it's just, it seems a lot higher than what I normally see.
I think we may have to change the amount we put in here.
We used to put zero.
And you used to put zero, but then it's been like,
Yeah, and then we only criticize,
A couple of years ago, it was 20,000.
Yeah, but maybe, we've always, now we've had some history, maybe we want to up that line.
A little bit of history, yes, sure. Next year is going to be an interesting year because of the COVID-19.
Year-end total summary estimates, what is that? Is that what we're talking about?
That's what we're talking about. This initial document is, so you can look at it. And next meeting will hone it in a lot more. Year-end monies will all be, have come in, and will be in good shape to be able to talk about dollars and cents.
Anything else on that? Ways discussion FY '21.
Again, you only have one more meeting to declare, like you always do in June. I gave you some of the estimates that were readily available on the internet. Kevin, if you could do your federal glance, that would be handy.
Yeah, and obviously this year, something where experts on Bureau of Labor Statistics is pointing to perhaps a 0.8 of 1% social security cost of living adjustment 2021. Can everyone hear me online, I hope? That adjustment would be substantially lower if it comes to pass in the 1.6% increase retirees pouring their monthly checks. This is as of April 22nd, and it's still not fully vetted with disparate impact caused by the COVID-19 crisis. Hope that's a little helpful for us looking ahead.
One comment I'd like to hear about me, from you, Russ, is that, you know, we go to the cost of living increase every year, but I'm assuming that there are some merit increases that are given to?
Well, truly, the only merit increases that we give is to the road crew as they develop into more mature drivers with different classes, different skill levels. So that's the only merit ones that we do.
Right, and here, how does that figure into the budget? Does that, you budget that into the road crew wages?
Yes. Yes, so we don't overspend.
Right.
We have, we have good knowledge of who's working the way we have to change. We had a very young group this last past year. This year, they're doing very well and improving their skills.
And anything to be told about what we've done on that?
What we've been doing today, which are, I didn't hear that.
How many, how many merit increases you're giving, and what for, would be good to know.
We can do that.
Thank you. Wyndham County Sheriff's contract.
Okay, Russ, I remember this whole thing that we had a discussion with. I thought the contract was, because they never get their hours, that they would only be paid for the hours they did. And what I'm reading is contract, doesn't sound like they're, the contract's that way. It sounds like they're just going to pay X amount of dollars and they hope to get there. I thought, what we originally agreed with, if they only, if they want to do 38 hours a week, and they want to bill you every quarter, why couldn't be, if they only work 28, they only get paid for the 28, they don't get paid for the 30.
There was a sentence in last year's contract that we added, and it was under compensation 2D. And it said, "The office will invoice the town once the balance of the town's deposit for services goes below $1,000 at the rate stated in Section 2C." And what we did is, we monitored that, and why it's not in this contract is because this contract is including 40 hours of secondary coverage from the Putney officer. So our 40 hours will be, and then some. So we're going to get,
I'm not disagreeing with you, but we've been down this road before, where they didn't come back. I'm just trying to see, there's nothing in this verbiage that says that if they didn't do those hours, they're still not going to get paid, they're still going to get the same dollar.
And as he explained it to me today, I asked about that line item. He stated that you're going to get your 40 hours and then some from the two officers every week. That's not going to be an issue as it was in the past when they only had, we only had one officer aligned for this town. So that's what the deal was when we voted it in, is that we were going to get that secondary 40 hours of coverage. The officers from Putney and Westminster will be offset, so that all of the time will be duplicated.
That's the problem, that is, just when you read the verbiage, it's basically saying he will get paid that every quarter, no matter what. There's nothing about penalty there if he doesn't reach those hours. This makes it sound, there's no penalty if he doesn't reach those hours.
If this becomes an issue, there is, is the clause of termination, and that's in the back. You always can say, well, we've only got X amount of hours, we're terminating this contract. And you're rightly so, you've got documentation with the STARS report every month.
But you're already, let's take a bad example. All of a sudden, he loses an officer or so, and then all of a sudden, he's only doing 20 hours a week. He's still going to bill us until we can cancel the contract. And by the time we cancel the contract, he still would have to pay them for all those hours. I just thought that we were going to put some agreement that, and it could be another quarter later, that, you know, you either make up for it, or the next quarter, we're not going to pay you the hours you have. You see what I'm saying? Somewhere like that, you've got to protect yourself in case, all of a sudden, the two officers both quit. And yeah, his intention was good, but he doesn't have the help to do it. This contract says, it doesn't matter if a zero person's there, he's going to get paid. And that's all my only concern, we went down this road before, and they couldn't find people to bill, you know? And I'm just thinking, fine, let's go one quarter at a time. Pay in the first quarter, but if they don't catch up, and they're only, and they're 30 hours behind after quarter, we've got to at least serve them to hit the next quarter, we're going to deduct a percentage. You see what I'm saying? Give the guy a break, let him have a quarter to get caught up. I thought that's what we were talking about.
And that's what it was last year. This year, he said, he stated very clearly that we're getting twice as much coverage, so having not enough coverage for 40 hours is not going to happen. The likelihood is slim.
Why can't we have a contract like we had last year, if it's all going to work out, and we're not going to deduct them? But it's our, it's the insurance for us.
I'm not disagreeing.
So this is the contract that he gave to us?
Yeah. We have until one more meeting to sign it.
You have supposedly the first meeting of when you receive this to sign it, which would be this meeting. I would suggest that you add the verbiage to it that you want, and I would get ahold of Susan at some point this next week, where we can get that verbiage into this contract.
I mean, I'm for what they want to do, because I don't want to be a negative person, but this, no, we've been down this road, where all of a sudden, we were paying for service and they didn't have it. And it was their intention, I mean, they just couldn't find people to work in this. These two people are both, they work, they really do, but if both get up and quit, or get hurt, or something happens, I just think, you've got to give their person a break. If they're way behind after quarter, you've got to give them a chance to get caught up. But the next quarter, I want to see that they're at,
It's not quarter, it's monthly. So I'll know after the first month whether they're making their quarter or not.
I thought it was payments of 82,000. Well, it is 12,000.
What do you mean by quarter?
Sorry?
What do you mean by quarter?
I didn't say quarter. It's not quarter, it's not paid by the quarter, it's paid by the month.
Yeah, like three months, right. So, but that would be different wording that we did last year, if we had Craig's suggestion.
We had something in there that we gave them a chance, you know?
So, I mean, take that section from last year's contract. What does that say? Okay, this is from last, this is from last year to the current year's contract. Under compensation 2D, "The office will invoice the town once the balance of the town's deposit for services goes below $1,000 at the rate stated in Section 2C."
Sweet, huh?
Yeah.
It means that his services in a month do not meet his quota, and it's a $1,000 difference or greater, that we are, he is literally cutting it off the next month's payment. We were very close one time this year, and he caught up significantly in the next month, and actually exceeded the hours. So we did have that almost get hit. And as I said, I asked him about it today, as I was looking at it, and said, you know, that this sentence should have been added in, and he gave us the idea that, hey, it's doubling your hours with two different officers, that the chances of both of them going down is slim to none, and they would cover each other, so that you'll be guaranteed your 40 hours.
And if that happens, it's not hurting them at all, it'll have the wording in there. There's no disadvantage to them, as long as we keep the 40 hours.
I agree.
It means, once it's done, we're still on, because that one person now has got to cover two towns. I mean, you can say it's great to have two, and helping each other, that was all along, we're always going to be that, you know?
So I'd like to put the wording back in there.
I would too.
Toby, what do you think? Kevin? I think we're agreed on that. Woody?
The paper that Russ just made around, in the case that the office, Aids are going to be paid 51 dollars, and the paper just paid out 41 on the month that came in.
What I just ended up with, last year's contract, so the hour, the hours change, gets more hours in the contract. So it's actually less per hour. So what I gave you was last year's comparison.
I think, I think you need a motion office, all right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. I move that we approve the contract and give Russ the authority to sign it on behalf of the board, or we all sign it.
No, it's just one.
Just one.
Typically, it's the chair.
All right, and I move that we sign the agreement for the contract for law enforcement with the town of Westminster for next year, give the chair of the board permission to sign on behalf, and that we add that line item D from last year, so it'd be under 2D, you add to the contract.
Okay, we have a motion that the board of contractors provides out that 2D, "The office will invoice the town once the balance of the town's deposit for services goes below $1,000 at the rate stated in Section," and I think that's 2C also, is added to the contract. Your second?
Second.
Moving seconded, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Code?
I just have a question about that. When did you guys see a copy of this contract? Tonight?
Right now.
And they were expected to vote on that tonight, and this is the first time they've seen it?
I received it, yes, I received it about a week ago, when I did this package. And that's what it states in it, that the first select board meeting after received.
So you got it a week ago, but they've just seen it tonight?
They got it, they got it in their packets before, but it's, it again, it wasn't much time.
Okay, did they see it tonight for the first time, or did they get it in their packets a week ago? That's what I'm asking.
They got it in their packets.
Yeah, a week ago.
We waited till Monday, sorry, yeah, because of the special town meeting, so they're not, they only have three days.
It was in her pack.
So you didn't pick up the package, unfortunately?
I get an email.
I mean, I'm just trying to understand the whole information, because it sounds like to me that you guys got the information tonight.
No, that's why I raised that question so fast, I had already read it for the last day or so, and went all through it, and I'm going, I couldn't find it.
That seems like a very short time for somebody to expect you to find that contract.
I read it three or four times, trying to find what I found, but I really didn't want to discuss it till we have a board.
No, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out the timing.
We've already got a bill for, from, for July, just so you know. Framed for today. Not by me.
But then there, I know how, I'm getting this together.
All right, moving on to sheriff's contract, executive session for contractor matter. Is a motion going to executive session?
I move that we vote for an executive session for contractor matter at the end of the meeting.
Moving second to executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Code? We'll do that after 10. Manager's report.
I'm going to place a letter in the Gazette thanking the parties for all the help with this special town meeting. We had a lot of parties that stepped up and really helped a lot. So that will be in the Gazette. Traps, stickers will be mailed out June 16th for next year. Alyssa John has asked about a motion that was made about the mandate loan, and she's questioning the wording. So in your packets, I've given you her email and the motion for clarity. I don't ask for it for tonight, but I do ask that you read it and ask questions. And then, next meeting, I'll have it as an agenda item for a possible recall.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, it's, I can get you a copy of that, Fram, if you'd like. We just received information the other day that we are going to be paid back for an overpayment of the school, as declared by the state of Vermont, of $99,030.67. And that is a combination of the Union Elementary School and the Dulles College and High School. Which is kind of nice, but obviously, we won't see it in this fiscal year, for next year.
And it's a technical question. Who's budget gives it back?
The state gives it back, they,
But does it go into our budget, or go back to?
It goes into our budget, because we paid them, we overpaid them. Delinquent tax update, I sent out a third letter for two-year delinquent folks. It was 18, I had 20 plus or minus, but it's 18 letters. These folks are the ones that have not shown any effort to contact me, or get a contract, or work through their delinquency. So they got a third letter, which states that June 26th is their drop dead date now, and before it goes to legal counsel, as you guys recommended. And tax sale is slated around late August. It has not been set by any means yet. But the third letter was sent out just recently to the 18 folks. And let's see what happens with that. And that's it.
Fourth of the minutes.
In your packet, you have two letters. The first one from Barry Seamus. She is writing petition to become a member of the planning commission. She's attended one meeting and enjoyed it, and would like to join the board. Just an FYI, we are down two members to a five-member board, so we only have three right now. So an added person is a very welcome idea.
If we appoint this person, don't we have to point to who they're filling? If we appoint them, there's two open positions, don't we have to point the person to which position it is?
Yeah, I'm not sure, but yeah, probably, and I don't have that firm.
Are they always in length of terms, like two years, or is it staggered?
They're staggered.
Yeah.
They are staggered.
That's what I was thinking together.
So I will fill in that and let you know what term she'll be.
I will give her a chance to choose which one she wants, for her, you know?
I'll be back in touch with you, but I would like a motion to accept her.
I'll say it.
Thank you.
Move by committee, second to Barry Seamus to the planning commission, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. That passes.
Got a letter today from Frances Renaud. "Please consider my willingness to serve on the Westminster Community Improvement Committee. I understand that there are now two persons serving on the three-person committee. Hence, I am applying to fill the third position." So there's the second one.
Motion to appoint Frances Renaud to fill in the Westminster Community Improvement Committee.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Moving second to appoint Fran Renaud to the community improvement committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, Fran. And we've been talking for a while about having the committee come before the board. And maybe we can do that in the next couple of meetings to discuss what's happening with that. Remember we talked about that?
Probably too late for that, the budget year, which would put it into July, but.
But we're waiting on it because we've been talking about this and something keeps coming up, so.
Well, it's really time to start advertising and speaking with this one.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. So I mean, it's a lot of money that we could use by people, so. Okay. Other business? No other business. Date of the next meeting, June 24th at 6:30. Wait, Fran, yes?
I just would like to make a comment about the town website. What is going on with it? Why are we so behind? You cannot go and look at an agenda or the minutes for 2020.
You can't, it's taking a while.
It's not on there. I just came from here. Before I came here, it stopped there. What's, what did it stop at? Because this is my neighbor and she went- No, I'm not that sorry. I'm talking about the development, the development.
Oh, the other group, that was.
Right, right. That was not there. Very, but there's nothing from 2020. And, uh, the other thing is that, that we had, Saturday, we had a special town meeting outside. And I was told that there was going to be a, an agenda. I hunted all over. I couldn't find the agenda. Then when I got here, I was told by Ally that it was there under town clerk. Why would I look under the town clerks for the agenda from the select board?
Because she's really charged with that meeting.
Because what?
She's really charged with that meeting. This town meeting, it's not a select board meeting, that's a town meeting. But.
She's in charge of it.
Well, because it was a town meeting. It wasn't a select board meeting. It's a town meeting, so the town clerk is. But, I mean, that's a very good point. We, we, we spent money last year, the import had this website upgraded and turned out to be a pretty poor job in my opinion, so.
Well, basically a mess because you have to, like, you have to click on this tab to go to that tab to go to that tab. And it doesn't take somebody updating the website. What about whoever is supposed to be putting the current information in? Who's doing that? Who's supposed to be doing it?
Well, uh, this is the section we had before. I mean, um, I think Russ's office does that, but are you still writing, Russ?
Yes, I'm listening though.
Okay. So, and I know that it falls depending if you put that way, select board agenda and minutes. But there are other commissions and boards. And if that, if she doesn't have time to do that, we need to make more provision.
It is tough for the website updates, but it is also a work in progress. We did the basics, um, which meant that we didn't, we don't have the ability right this second to put, uh, like a link to a Zoom meeting on it. That is being rectified as we speak. It's taking time. I don't know why it's taking so much time, but it is.
And how much time does it, does it take to copy an agenda for the minutes and post it? It doesn't take long at all. I used to do that. And then I was told I couldn't do it anymore by Russ. Sure, but anyway, it doesn't take long. I've done it.
Wow. Because I can't speak with Kelly. But the, the other thing is, are we going to have a DRE and other commission minutes and agenda on it? Is that what you're talking about, Russ? That's a work in progress?
Works, yes. We're still trying to get, it takes us off the main page and the main working. And then we will update the, the other parts of the website. We often not putting on the front page, kind of construction, but it is, it is. And it's taking a lot more time than I thought it was going to. But we are working on it and we will get this up to date on this now. And in your timeframe, until we get that update on the front page done, then we can move forward.
And this is the same person that?
It's the same company, yes.
You don't have a choice as to what minutes and agendas you put up there? You, you can't say I'm not. And if Kelly doesn't have time, you have to have somebody else do it. You can't say the DRE has a meeting and they have minutes and an agenda. You don't have the right legally to say, well, we're not putting those up there. It's a town website and it is steep statute that any public body that has, holds public meetings, has agendas and has minutes. Out of there, if it's a Lister board, they have to be on there.
And they have to be on there within?
Within, within, I think they've extended it because of this whole pandemic and I don't know the timeframe, but it used to be five days.
Yeah.
And so if there's a problem with timing and somebody's got too much work to do, you don't have the luxury of saying that person doesn't have time. You guys are going to get yourselves with this public meeting stuff into some big trouble if it's not followed. Because people are starting to pay attention. And I, and it's really, it's, it's really, and you know how, it's really frustrating. You don't have the luxury of saying we're not doing it.
With your friend?
I was just wanting to say there are quite a few people who are talking in the background who are really upset with not, with feeling like their, their purpose being left out.
Because, uh?
Because things are not covered.
Because they can't find the agenda and the minutes in the website because the website is hard to navigate.
Well, they don't know exactly what they're, or what they're, they're not saying anything why. They're just saying they're really in stress or it's off.
Yeah.
Well, if you can't put the link, at least drop it in that folder. Because everything for the month goes in one folder. At least drop a pair.
So you can keep it in a folder?
Yeah, there's one folder for each month.
Yeah, right, right.
So you can't put the link to the proper page, at least put it in the folder, so.
So that many RV minutes are on the agenda, are on the website at all?
Not, especially those of 2020.
Okay, but they have been, but haven't been updated for this year, is that what you're saying?
What do you think? Uh, this is 2020?
It is 2020.
To, to find the date and time of this meeting, you have to go to the, for the select board meeting, you have to know the last month's minutes to find it.
There should be more transparency.
So if you want to know where this meeting is, you need to go through last month's minutes to find out. It's not on front page?
I think it's in the agenda. No, I think it's in the agenda. No, you're right.
So it's not on front page at all?
It's not on front page.
I don't know if it's like, such a large agenda, the agenda and the time.
Once it's posted. Once it, once it's actually posted.
Right.
It's not posted until they've.
Front page says this.
You would think that once we leave this meeting, we've already decided the next meeting is going to be this date and this time. That it would only take a day to get it back onto that website.
So they would just?
You know, the minute.
It would not have the agenda yet.
Right, not the agenda, not the, not the minutes, at least it would be on the front page for where it really is. It's June 27th at 6:30, that's what the board voted would be the next meeting.
In where?
In, in where, exactly.
I just want to go back to the comment that was made about the town meeting and not being able to find that easily. I called and asked for that to be put on the front page, even the budget is to be put on there. And, um, because people were asking me where the binding word was, they couldn't find it. I do, I agree that Ally has to run that meeting, that it's her checklist, you know, she's got to check people in. I do not agree that it's her meeting to have it under her, if you want to put it there too, but it's our town meeting.
It is our town meeting.
And it should be, and I did ask for that to happen and was told that, get back to me and I, I kept talking and it wasn't there, so.
And how do the, how do the citizens of Westminster know they have to go look under Ally's page or their Ally's whatever to find it? Because they think of it as being ours, you know, the towns or the select board being determined.
Well, I don't think, I don't think it's the website. I think it's, it's putting stuff on the website. Woody?
Well, I was sort of, I was thinking that you get together a nerd committee. And I say that some of the people who really know how to make the system function, put in order to have one of the select board members part of that committee, just do it, just break it down. All I hear is a lot of miscommunication. And I'm saying there is this meeting for getting reverberation from the rumor and people can't, there is no economy. I look at the ads that people are saying that it's a lot of shit. And I realize we're in a hot situation, um, but something's going to change, so we can just communicate with the center and agree.
Did you call it a nerd committee, something like that?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, fortunately, it's a particular decision, a total let up. I have nothing about, however, sitting on the outside, sometimes I can see the pieces being put together, but I have no idea on it.
I have you open, sorry. Sure, we can find your.
Well, we're, we're, we're in different times because normally you always know it's going to be at that building at 6:30, it's on our calendar. But with this going on, you're right, more people are going to be looking to see, well, where is it this time? You know, and I would say, yeah, we're in more, more information on, on our website than ever.
Woody?
Uh, what? Basically, it's not like, it's not like we're going to be doing it. Get somebody else to work it, and build an idea of it.
Somebody would do it.
No, I should say, you forgot my answer, yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, I actually, I can do it.
Okay.
Have somebody do this quickly. Make sure you have a seven, like, next, uh, next, uh, sitting for a day.
And what?
Trying to get this whole thing straightened out, like, meetings. And all I know, the other point is, get somebody to explain exactly how Zoom functions. Get that stuff up this week long before this public meeting. Because I, I'm watching from the outside watching people talking to Zoom and it doesn't seem that difficult. As far as I know, as far as I know, it would be probably up to the select board to send out the, uh, what's it called?
The link instruction?
Yeah, the instructions, the, uh, anyway, it's up to the select board to lead to that technical, tie it down all at the same time. And it must be noted by anybody who has a computer within the town. I do know that Zoom, uh, should be able to function. I might, I might not have the whole thing.
Yeah, we may on, maybe something wrong with that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how to make it work. I mean, it's tricky.
Well, it was actually easier when we all just do it because we're all in a different room, we're all looking at each other. This is the most, this is the hardest combination of having the open meeting because I'm sure who's ever on that computer never heard a word you just said. You know what I'm saying? And whereas the other meetings, we're all sitting, you know, six inches from the computer and they can see us all. But this is the best way to accommodate both. It's just, this is not a good environment, you know?
Then why not have to make sure that there is a microphone here when you know you're going to be here?
Yeah. Well, like I said, every meeting, we tried different things and this is.
You've got to be, or be.
Yeah, this is Alex Sharp, back here with Detroit.
Alex, yeah.
I mean, the larger space is, is something like, I mean, the, the thing that's going to make it better the next time is going to require a more setup is having cable mics miking up different areas of the fire station. But okay, we, we, probably the damage charge you got to ignore because, uh, one of us, I think you guys, we've been charged for a setup, a little bit more, um, you know, a little bit more time to make it done.
Yep.
More, I mean, PA meeting. Uh, have a PA system for people that are speaking and meeting. The problem with Zoom is it applies a lot of voice reduction. So, uh, anyone that's further away, Zoom, that's just background noise and it just takes it down. So we need to get mics closer to people for the next time around. And I'm only going to talk with Russ and get this taken care of, which is just a little tough with larger spaces.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Alex, for everything you've done.
I apologize for sounding weird, I guess. That's a good idea.
I would say just.
I think, I think a space is much better, a physical value might seem much better than a 2,000 square foot room with 18 foot ceiling.
Right.
That's what I.
I understand.
But then there's also the doors open, so in background noise, volume or, or. Zoom is automatically going to take down the audio to adjust for that, so, um, yeah, it just requires a little bit more time with the new setup. It takes a little bit of time.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, the advantage of this space is it's practically outdoors, so presumably it's safer, but, you know. Thank you.
If I could interject, Alex?
Hi, Alex, what's happening?
I also, I also noticed that when members of the audience speak through their masks, it is less horrible than when you pull the mask down. So I think that they have a lot to do with us being able to hear.
Yeah, thank you, that's for sure.
It's, it's all a part of the problem.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're further away from the mic and we really need more mics, uh, for the next meeting. Fortunately, you know, uh, they're, they're, they're too far away from the single mic, so, I mean, we will, we'll take care of that far to ourselves, fortunately. The actual recorder version will have better audio clarity because there's no voice reduction being applied to it. Zoom automatically applies this, uh, voice reduction and that's the problem. That's the main problem. So, um, the, the recorder version would be better.
Thank you. Um, we can, but then people don't have a, a computer.
We were trying, we were trying to solve the problem, but we were doing Zoom. We were all, we never needed a board, so we can't have a meeting with five people with a board. This way they could. Because we go to back to Zoom, it's like we all sit home and, and there's no, there's no place. So we thought this may be the best combination we could work it out because people that don't feel comfortable can, can do Zoom. But the people who want to actually come and listen and talk, we just need to work, we need to get it much better.
What if, what if you all brought your laptops here?
Just.
So you have a laptop, you have a laptop, you have a laptop, your laptop, you're all on screen. Everybody can hear you, we can hear you.
I'm not sure.
I'm not a member. You're tired, I'm, too much feedback.
And when you're getting bad.
Boy, I'm not a member.
I mean, I, yeah. Thank you, Chuck.
Well, we always, when we had the fax TV, we always had a mic in each table before it could work.
I would just say pay fax TV to help me figure this out. If you watch, I don't know if you guys watch any other board meetings in this area on fax TV. They're somehow figuring it without all of this audience being upset that they're not able to participate. So they're doing something different.
And there are, the audience can, um, maybe work.
As far as I know, I mean.
Do you have anyone particularly participating?
Well, that was all, or I can't. I mean, I don't, it's hard for me to know. I don't know if anybody's, I'm not participating by saying I'm watching them live on fax TV. I don't know what, I, maybe nobody's watching. I don't, I presume, I don't know.
Anything else?
You have a thing? Yeah, TV.
Yeah, they've done a great job. We appreciate it very much. Special meeting and everything you've done, yeah. Hey, I think we're going to go to executive session.
We're looking to update the next meeting, now we want to actually meet. I think at least we ought to get it out, like they said, that the next meeting. I think at least we ought to get it out, like they said, that the next meeting, we were, at this meeting, we approved that we're gonna be June 24th here, I guess, and then we'll do a combination of Zoom and open. I just, I think at least we leave and we all agree how we're gonna do it. It gives more time for fit information, help the people of how we're gonna hold our next select board meeting.
Another program on Zoom? I know on, on Facebook, you can go chat and have four or five people, and get all the information. Because I do it with my kids.
But it, there is, but, I mean, Zoom works the way we were doing it. We're just trying to figure out how to have the open meeting. Just like if, if an executive session, if it's board or stuff, anything, really hard to ever do with Zoom.
Well, I would, I would suggest, follow some of his suggestion about other towns that are not having problems, and break down and call them and ask them for some advice.
And I'm assuming Alex is the one that's helping on that fact TV, so he probably knows, but...
Alex, do we want to have a dear then?
Well, you know, I think the problem with this thing, it's seriously a problem for audio.
Oh, yeah, there's no doubt about it. It's big and it's airy and...
But what's the reason why we couldn't have it in that room? Other than, other than it can only be 25% capacity, so we can't be close to that at most any meeting, I think.
So we could have, we could have, what is the capacity?
Let's just warn it, at least for here.
Yeah.
And that's the best thing, why we put in there. The sound is much better, it's a lot quieter. We could leave these doors open, maybe, so technically, it's still open meeting. At least in there, the ceiling is low, the sound's better, and we could set it up for them with the mics, be much better. And just leave the doors open. So if somebody wanted to stand out here, they can if we have too many people.
Whether they would set up and change the school book? Well, they wouldn't, you mean the night before, is that what you're saying?
They're out here also.
They're out here? Why would that present it sometime in the morning?
But at least we warn it, it's gonna be built in, where in the building? Let's get, let Russ to check it out.
Are you going to be voting on anything after you come out of executive session? To do with this contract discussion?
I doubt it, but... No, oh, well, you know, actually...
Is this the one, Kipper, huh?
Actually, we're gonna have to put it off because Sheldon's not here.
Let me say, if this is the one, we think we're going to start without Sheldon.
Yeah, no, we're gonna have to do that, so...
We can't be so secretive about what the contract is. You're not discussing the contract in front of us.
I wasn't, I'm not sure. We never had an discussion ahead of this. Are we talking about? If that's what it is, I wasn't sure, I thought it was.
So tell me, is this his contract?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all.
Well, I didn't know, I didn't do the agenda. I didn't know the agenda. I assumed that's what it was, but I'm... Right. But sometimes things come up during that I don't know about.
So you're still gonna go into executive session, though, even though Sheldon's not here?
We are, I was gonna go table, because Sheldon has information that we need for...
He has, yeah.
Okay, I don't need to know anymore, I just am curious what was gonna happen.
Well, once he answers the question of, then we can stay there.
So we have an executive session in the last one?
No, I, we can, I, I make a motion that we don't, we don't go, we don't enter into the executive session.
Move to the second, if we don't move to executive session, all in favor? I oppose, no. Hopefully, we'll have the information, okay? Do I move to adjourn the meeting, someone?
Move to adjourn.
Move to the second, adjourn the meeting, all in favor? I oppose. Oh, you're still working. Thank you all, thanks for coming.